In a world where loyal companions await, one place stands as their beacon of hope. The Pet Resource Center of Hillsborough County, where you can adopt your very own superhero. Adopt a dog, find your sidekick, and unlock the power of unconditional love. Suit up, show up, and adopt today. For more information, visit hcfl.gov/pets.
So good, yeah, change your grip. There you go.
All right, so now twist it.
Stop. All right, close it. And then we're gonna dig deeper down in. Yeah, deeper in.
Let it cut all the way.
Yes, keep going. Stop.
The walking excavator is what we use to traverse and stabilize and mow the canals in the various locations. It's a very specialized piece of equipment with a specialized skill set for the operators. They were originally designed to operate on the side of mountains, but there's been uses of finding them to be used within swamps and canals. Its main role is to traverse into the canal to remove the sediment that's been washed away from the banks and into the bottom of the canal and reestablish that onto the banks. We've got to bring the wet dirt from the bottom, set it on top, let it dry a little bit, and then it gets repacked into the banks to re contour and also to open up the capacity of the canal. Once that is complete, then we come back and either timeframe of the job starting to stopping, either Mother Nature has started to grow grass back through. If that is not the case, then we will actually order sod to be laid down to help ensure that the dirt that's been repacked stays in place.
Good evening, welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners' first budget public hearing. The purpose of tonight's public hearing on the budget is to take public comment on millage rates and the budget prior to the board approving two resolutions setting tentative millage rates and a tentative budget for fiscal year 26. The millage rates and budget will be adopted Thursday, September 18th after a final budget public hearing. In a moment, the budget director will read into the record the increase in the aggregate fiscal year tentative millage rate from the rollback rate. We will also receive a brief discussion regarding the status of the tentative budget, after which we will take public comment. At the conclusion of public comment tonight, the board will discuss any potential changes to the budget. Before turning things over to Mr. Bricki, ask Ms. Wise if she has any opening comments.
Thank you, and good evening, commissioners. Tonight, as you mentioned, is the first of two budget public hearings on the fiscal year 2026 budget as required by Florida statutes. Tonight, we'll receive a budget update from our management and budget director, Kevin Bricki. We'll take public comment and discuss the proposed budget and take formal action to adopt the tentative millage rates and tentative budget resolutions for the coming fiscal year. We'll also announce the details, as you mentioned, of the second and final budget public hearing, which is two weeks from tonight, Thursday, September 18th. This hearing was advertised in the notice of proposed property taxes, also known as the TRIM notice, sent out in August by the property appraiser's office to all parcel owners. The final hearing on September 18th will be advertised in the newspaper on Sunday, September 14th, and will include the tentative millage rates and budget adopted here this evening. Tonight's hearing is more than just a legal requirement. It's a key part of our ongoing commitment for transparency, sound financial management, and community service. I'm proud to report that the fiscal year 26 proposed budget includes millage rate reductions for all county residents, whether one lives in one of our three cities or in the unincorporated area. We're returning value to our taxpayers while continuing to make strategic investments in the services and infrastructure that support our growing community. Hillsborough County remains in strong financial health, holding AAA bond ratings from all three major rating agencies, a direct result of disciplined planning and responsible management. This year's budget strengthens our position even further with additional contributions to our catastrophic reserves, ensuring we can respond quickly and efficiently to future emergencies and unforeseen events. Public safety continues to be a top priority. This budget includes funding for a new fire station, a replacement station, and equipment upgrades for fire rescue. It also supports critical capital improvements for the sheriff's office, including upgrades to the jail and a new operations center, both vital to remaining public safety and meeting future needs. We are also advancing our commitment to transportation infrastructure with a renewed focus on repaving roads, improving intersections, building sidewalks, repairing bridges, and implementing safety enhancements across the county. I want to sincerely thank the Board of County Commissioners, our dedicated county staff, and the public for your continued involvement and trust in this process. Your engagement helps shape a budget that serves all residents and supports the future of Hillsborough County. At this time, I'll turn it over to Kevin Bricki, who'll read the required statements into the record and walk us through the highlights of the fiscal year 26 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, commissioners. Kevin Bricki, Director of Management and Budget. The calculated change in the tentative aggregate millage represents a 2.76% increase from the aggregate rollback rate. State law requires that we also describe the reason for the increase over the rollback rate. The budget under consideration tonight reflects in part normal as well as recently heightened inflationary increases in the cost of doing business. It also reflects the need to provide local government services to a growing population, which includes ongoing funding for transportation, fire rescue services, statutory and contractual commitments, union contracts, technology upgrades, constitutional officers, and certain other county needs. With that, I'll now provide a brief overview of the budget. The FY '26 budget is currently at $12.038 billion. The public safety accounts for 24% of the budget between the sheriff and fire rescue. And then looking at enterprise funds and healthcare services, that's another approximately 25%, 50% of those first four categories. The largest changes in the budget from FY '25 to '26, the total change is about $1.7 billion. 75% of that, three quarters, is in our capital program, which is primarily driven by the water program and the One Water Project, as that starts to ramp up. There was an increase in reserves, that's about 18.5%. Increase in county administrator departments in the general funds, $33 million or about As the county administrator mentioned, we do have some millage changes that are in the tentative budget. There is a 0.1418 millage swap, that's a reduction of that amount in the countywide general fund, and an increase in the unincorporated area general fund of that same amount. That's a net decrease in revenue of $10.3 million, and that accrues to property owners that are within the cities. But also, as the county administrator mentioned, there is property tax reduction in the unincorporated area. The parks debt millage, which we've had for a very many number of years, that debt is maturing and is no longer needed, and that's a 0.259 reduction in millage in the unincorporated area, about $2.6 billion. So all in all, about $12.9 billion in reductions. The FY '26 tentative countywide general fund is about $1.6 billion. 56% of that is going to constitutional officers and other outside agencies, the sheriff being the largest portion. That's where the court and jails are funded from. The unincorporated area general fund, $900 million. 66%, two thirds of that to public safety, fire, rescue, and sheriff. There for the sheriff, that's law enforcement. The county administrator mentioned some areas where we've had strong funding for capital improvements in transportation, fire rescue and emergency management, sheriff operations. We have others in stormwater, Veterans Memorial Park, and other parks as well. Tonight, after I finish up, you'll take public comment, have board discussion, adopt the tentative millage resolution first, followed by the tentative millage resolution first, followed by the tentative budget resolution. We are towards the end of the calendar. This is the first of the required state-required public hearings. The second public hearing will be September 18th. With that, I would recommend that you take public comment.
All right, thank you very much, Kevin, for your overview. We'll go into the public comment portion of the agenda. I want to state, when I call your name, please come to the microphone. Each person be given three minutes. First three speakers, Josie Garcia is virtual, followed by Clayton Clemmons, and then Sheila Simmons-Tribble. Is Josie on the line?
Mr. Chair, the lady did not call.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, the lady did not call.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. Clayton Clemmons, followed by Sheila Simmons-Tribble, and then Lois Price.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, council members, commissioners, I apologize. My name is Clayton Clemmons, and I'm the Executive Director of Project Focus. I am here to not talk about the budget, to be frank. I'm here to let you guys know about an organization and a nonprofit providing vital resources, supports, and services to young adults with developmental disabilities and their families. I want to pause for five seconds and ask you, what was your why when you ran for office? What's your purpose? What makes you get up in the morning? About 10 years ago, my why was born, but he had a stroke in utero, and he was my nephew. And he suffered from seizures for a year, ended up disconnecting half his brain, and it left his family with a lot of challenges. And from that moment on, I use that as my why in providing and supporting this population into adulthood. And so Project Focus is a nonprofit founded by the backs and off the backs of parents and families with children who have developmental disabilities. Some in the audience today, Mr. Eric Eisenberg, Josephine Eisenberg, and Loretta Gal Lopez. Our programs are unique, and we support young adults and students in very, with a different approach. We utilize drama therapy and mental health to really target and allow them to grow. We support Focus Academy and Temple Terrace, Focus Forward, an adult day training program. We have a workforce readiness training program that supports individuals after hours, and we just launched a Focus Day School to support students in grades three through six. Our long-term goal, and the reason I was brought to this organization, is to support the development of a community within the community. Many of us talk about workforce housing, and this population is one that needs it the most. One of the major concerns from our families and our students and our parents is what's going to happen to them when they're no longer here. And Project Focus and the entities we support are here to provide that solution and work with our local and state and federal partners in bringing those solutions to life. We have amazing relationships with the University of South Florida, University of Tampa, and dozens of fellow nonprofit providers in our community. And as we look into the future, that community we envision will include housing, supported living, workforce development, commercial space for our retail and nonprofit partners to serve as job training sites, and we hope to include an educational facility that will continue our mission. And so as you guys continue to think about your purpose tonight, and as you discuss the budget going into next year, I'd like you to consider and just remember, you know, Project Focus and the population we serve. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Sheila Simmons-Tribble, followed by Lois Price, and then Catherine Bethany Bailey. Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm grateful and thankful to be here again tonight in front of you, speaking for affordable housing. My name is Sheila Simmons-Tribble, and I do remember this time Commissioner Hagan to say that. And I am the co-president of Hope, the co-chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, and the Mental Health Committee, and a member of Bible-Based Fellowship Church. I'm here on behalf of the seniors on fixed incomes, the veterans, persons with disability, and the many working families who cannot afford to pay and keep up with the pace of rent today. The need is really real. A single rent hike can mean choosing between rent and medication. The county's local dollars have already shown to be very valuable, and it has already made a difference in the lives of many people. Since 2019, the Hope Affordable Housing Fund has helped to launch more than 1,100 homes, including 386 units this year alone, because every county dollar pulls in state, federal, and private money, and this leverages between $5 and $6 per $1 that we put in. The good news is that the money for affordable housing has been placed hopefully back in the budget, and we're asking that you keep at least that $1.4 million that was discussed at the last meeting. And those dedicated dollars will very much make a difference. Even the modest amount will make a difference and preserve progress and prevent hundreds of neighbors from sliding into homelessness. Some have said that the Affordable Housing Fund duplicates state efforts. In fact, most state and federal housing dollars require a local match, and without this allocation, we leave millions on the table and families in the cold. So, thank you for looking at, and I hope seriously thinking about, that $1.4 million, because we need to put a face on those numbers, and you have seen the stats, we have presented the stats time and time again. But what I want you to remember is that with that $1.4 million, the senior who would be able to sleep indoors as opposed to outdoors, the veteran who would no longer be couch surfing and looking for somewhere to live, but above all, the child who can do the homework at a kitchen table as opposed to in the seat of a car. Safe, stable homes strengthen our entire community, and thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments. Lois Price, followed by Catherine Bethany Bailey, and then Justin LaRosa. Good evening.
Hello, commissioners. I am Lois Price, and I'm from Hope. I'm grateful that you voted to restore $2 million to the Affordable Housing Fund in the 2026 budget. It's my understanding that after flagged items are deducted from that amount, $1.4 million remains, and that that money will be used to expand the supply of affordable housing in the county. I'd like some clarity on that. I also understand that none of the HUD disaster recovery money will be used for new housing, only to replace or restore housing that was damaged during the storms. In recent years, the county's Affordable Housing Services Department has overseen the development of many impressive communities throughout the county. The more than 1,000 units that have been created are now providing safe, affordable homes for so many people, including low-wage workers like nurses aides and teachers aides. When we speak to educators, we hear that children who are safely and securely housed are much more likely to succeed in school. When we speak to experts in the medical field, we hear that people who are safely and securely housed are more likely to be free of chronic disease. Countywide, the health and safety of our community is improved when residents are properly housed. While I'm relieved to know that many people have benefited from the county's affordable housing services, I know that there's more to do. Thousands of people remain on the waiting list for Section 8 housing, and I know firsthand what it's like for people to wait on affordable housing. One single mom whom our church is now assisting was sleeping this summer at night in her car with three children. During the day, she works full-time, 12-hour shifts to two different assisted living places. Most of her earnings go to childcare. A few months ago, she was able to move into a small Section 8 apartment, but it's in St. Petersburg. Having a safe, affordable home now means that her children are doing better in school, and she's allowed to go back to school and work on a certificate that will allow her to work at a higher pay grade in the assisted living places that she's working. This secure housing for her means that her and her family are doing better, but she's one of the lucky ones. For thousands of others here in our county, there is no affordable housing. Allocating funds for affordable housing in this county in the 2026 budget will allow our Affordable Housing Services Department to improve the lives of so many county residents, many of whom provide essential services to all of us. So I do ask you to provide at least $2 million in the county budget.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
Thank you.
And Bonnie, Ms. Price had a couple of questions. If you can have someone just answer those to her. Thank you. Catherine Bethany Bailey, followed by Justin LaRosa, and then Lori Jones Aluku. Good evening.
Good evening. This is the first time I have attended a public hearing, but it's the first time I really felt like I needed to. Like every homeowner in this room, I got my TRIM notice last month, and even though my property value has plummeted, my property taxes are going up, largely in part due to the millage rate increases you guys will be voting on today. Now, I didn't drive all the way from Riverview because my taxes went up $500. I drove all the way from Riverview because I need you to hear what that $500 means to my family and the families of Hillsborough County. The Tampa-Hillsborough Homeless Initiative and the Florida Council on Homelessness both conducted studies recently that found that 50% or greater increases in our unhoused population. People are losing their homes, our friends, our neighbors, and even our family members. So let's look at why. America's inflation rate, as determined by the Consumer Price Index, is just 2.7% this year. But this year, Hillsborough County approved a 4.1% increase in the price per gallon of tap water. Florida's Public Service Commission approved a 6.7% rate increase for Tampa County electric bills from TECO Energy. Hillsborough County homeowners have seen their homeowners insurance premiums raised by an average of 15% this year. And now, this year, Hillsborough County is preparing to vote, you're preparing to vote, on a 9.86% overall increase from the 2024 millage rates. The local school millage rate alone is proposed to go up 44.5% this year. Water, electricity, homeowners insurance, property taxes, these are just four of the countless costs homeowners must keep up with, and it is no wonder that our homeless population continues to grow. I am not advocating against millage rates increases entirely. I'm simply asking that they be tempered. Please consider spreading these millage rate increases over several years rather than 9.86% in a single year, that is three times the rate of inflation. I said at the beginning, I did not come here because my taxes went up $500. I came here for all the families in Hillsborough County who don't have that, who don't have 4.1% for water, 6.7 more for electricity, or 44.5% more for the local school millage rate increases you're about to vote on. Millage rate increases are just one piece of the homeowners puzzle, but if you enact these budget changes, they could become the piece that drives Hillsborough County families from their homes.
Thank you very much for your comments. Justin LaRosa, followed by Lori Jones Aluku, and then Dr. Fred Hicks. Is Mr. LaRosa here? If not, Lori Jones Aluku.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Lori Jones Aluku from Bible-Based Fellowship Church and member of Hope. At first, I want to start by thanking Commissioners Bowles, Hagan, Myers, and I'm leaving out someone, I apologize.
Cohen.
Cohen, the most important one, of course. Cohen for voting to keep the $2 million of Hope funds in the 2026 budget. But there's also someone else I showed up tonight to thank, because you guys probably know I got the crazy story about the neighbors who were homeless who were living in a tent. And I want to thank, because I can't let this go, I have to thank Dwight Wilson and the Homeless and Community Services Team from Hillsborough County for reaching out to that couple. They literally reached out, tracked them down. I mean, seriously, they tracked them down, they found them, they were in some motel by this point. They did, they, I just, I'm shocked and amazed at the amount of effort they put in to try to help that little family get off the street and find some type of housing. They went out of their, they literally, I'm just going to say they went above and beyond, so I want to thank you for having that type of support available. And so I'm here on behalf of people like Carla D. and her partner, who need that type of housing, when they're working-class people, but they just can't afford a place to live, and they live in these weird scenarios in their cars and motels and tents in people's yards, which is scary as heck during hurricane season. I'm here on behalf of those types of people. I'm glad you have a team of people who care so much about those people, but I ask you to keep that $2 million in play. Vote for the $2 million, and I ask for the rest of you commissioners to vote to keep that in the budget for 2026 to help people like Carla D. and other people and families who are sleeping in cars and children who are sleeping in cars, which scares me to death when I hear stories like that. Thank you, but thank you again, commissioners.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jones Aluku. Dr. Fred Hicks, followed by Stacy Ransom, and then the last speaker is Julio Lopez. Good evening.
Good evening. The most significant way we can grow Hillsborough County businesses and our economy is to invest in our youngest residents. 90% of a child's brain is developed by age five. We are your strategic partners in ensuring that children are ready for kindergarten. I start with a huge thank you. I thank you not only for your guidance, your governance... I thank you not only for your guidance, your governance, and your expertise in running our county in a manner that says there's opportunity and hope. In the last six years, 1.6 million, approximately $276,000 a year, has been invested and subsequently matched by the State of Florida's Division of Early Learning to ensure that children are ready for kindergarten. Who are these children? These are the children who, their parents go to work every day. They attempt to make lives better. On average, these children are under age eight and wake up every day excited about learning and supported by not only our community, but our professionals, our childcare centers, and small businesses right here in our county. I'm a proud taxpayer, excited every time I know that my dollars are going to go help and ensure that our neighbors' kids who run down the street, ride those bikes, are going to be ready for kindergarten. But it's not just in my zip code, right? It's spread throughout Hillsborough County. We know that we served 901 infants in our last count with these dollars. Close to 5,000 children, on average, 815 children every year receive the benefit of knowing they have a chance, they can learn, and be ready for kindergarten. So what is ready for kindergarten? One, a child who's self-regulated. Two, a child who walks in the door excited, knowing a little bit about language and their letters. And then three, probably more important, numeracy. Tonight, you're talking about our budget. You started early learning your numbers. This entire audience is here regarding the budget. In a couple of weeks, you'll have more conversations about budgets and numbers and how they really matter in everyone's lives. And yet, every day, a child who receives $3 for Kona Ice is learning that early lesson. You are making tough decisions this evening, and I respect that. I respectfully know that our friends at the children's board have the same ask in front of them, thanks to some guidance I received earlier by one of our important commissioners, Commissioner Wostel, followed by Commissioner Myers, who said, "Let's ask everyone, because these dollars are essential." Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. Stacy Ransom is virtual. Stacy on the line?
Hi, yes, I'm here. Good day.
Good evening.
My name is Stacy Ransom, and I am a staunch supporter of the people and the Hope Affordable Housing Fund. I want to start out by personally thanking and appreciating Commissioner Bowles, excuse me, we'll make you doctor someday, but Commissioner Bowles for looking at the evidence and having a change of heart and making it so that the $2 million that is left for this year can be used in a way that will help the people of Hillsborough County. We all know that affordable housing isn't just an issue that affects certain people, it affects all of us. When people are sleeping on the street, that's something we all have to see. Everyone has a heart. There's no way that we want anyone out in this particular heat, in these rains, and all of these natural disasters and things like that that were happening. We know that all of those things make it hard for each and every one of us every single day. We all are one natural disaster, one layoff, or one bad investment away from being homeless. And why would we want to put anyone else in that situation? It's a foundational issue. It's a basic need, and we really want to make sure that everyone is safe. Having housing is an issue of public safety. So I just want to continue to thank you for reconsidering this for 2026. Please do keep the $2 million in the budget for 2026, and thanks again to Commissioner Bowles, Commissioner Hagan, Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Cohen for their continued support. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ransom. Last speaker, Julio Lopez. Mr. Lopez here. Good evening, sir.
Hello. Good evening, all. Thank you for being here. I appreciate your time. I'm Julio Lopez, but please call me Jules. I am a member of Hope and the First United Church of Tampa. I'm here to ask you all to preserve the Affordable Housing Fund. It is an essential tool to address homelessness here in Tampa and the affordable crisis, generally speaking. I've known too many friends and neighbors who've been priced out of Tampa simply because they can't afford neither a mortgage nor rent, and these are people who are near and dear to me. And I imagine that some of you have either experienced that or have heard tell of that through your network of friends and family. So I ask you to please continue to support the Affordable Housing Fund and see to it that in the future, we can possibly extend it and expand on it, because it does make a difference. We need affordable housing. We need housing, period, but especially affordable housing. We've lost too many homes in these last two hurricanes of Milton and Helene. To say nothing of the reports by national media of all the homes that aren't built and that those that are built are luxury condos, luxury apartments, luxury homes that are priced out for most people, especially my generational cohorts of, you know, the millennials. So I ask you to please continue to support this. Thank you for the support you have given it, and if you need, I don't know, additional support or speakers, what have you, please feel free to reach out to Hope or myself, and I will do what I can to lend a hand and to lift you as you've lifted me and the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Jules, for your comments. All right, that closes the public comment. I don't see anyone in the queue, so before adopting the millage and budget resolutions, we must publicly announce the following. The name of the taxing authority is the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. The aggregate rolled-back rate is 8.5073 mils. The proposed aggregate tentative millage rate of 8.7421 mils represents a 2.76% increase from the aggregate rolled-back rate. The tentative millage rates to be levied are countywide general revenue, 5.4608 mils, unincorporated area municipal services taxing unit, 4.6163 mils, library services, .5583 mils, voted general obligation debt for environmentally sensitive lands, .0604 mils. At this point, it is appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the millage resolution as presented by staff. Before we do that, I do see Commissioner Wostel in the queue. Commissioner Wostel?
I just wanted to briefly clear up the one statement that was made, that we have zero control over the school board's millage rate increase. That is not something that we're doing here tonight. I know it was mentioned, the only two line items that were on your term notice that you held up that we're referencing is under county and municipal called general revenue and MSTU. Those are the two line items on your term rate notice. I know that there's many on there, largely ones that are completely outside of the realm of the county commissioners, and I'm happy to be corrected, but the, the sum of the unincorporated and county-ride property tax ad valorem is going down on that total rate. Is that correct?
So there are, in addition to the two you mentioned, there's also the library taxing district.
Yes.
And there's also the ELAP debt.
Which is voter-approved.
That's correct.
Right. I'm talking about what we have control over.
So in the, in, so there is the millage swap, and if you're in the unincorporated area, that's a wash. When you're in the cities, that's a reduction. And then you have the, the removal of the parks debt that we've had, that's a reduction to the unincorporated area.
I know you're the smartest person in the room, but can we just keep it super simple that the total of those two are going down?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make that very clear. I'm fully against the school board's tax increase, but it is happening. It was voter-approved, so thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Wostel. So can we have a motion to adopt the millage resolutions?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, I'll let it vote for you. Motion carried seven to zero.
All right. Now that the tentative millage resolution has been adopted, it's appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the budget resolution as presented by staff. If we can have a motion.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Wostel. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, so that concludes tonight's budget public hearing. The date, time, and place of the final public hearing will be 6:00 PM on Thursday, September 18, 2025, in the county commission boardroom on the second floor of the county center, 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33602. So with that, thank you everyone for coming down, and we're adjourned.